Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Next is item 4.2, which is the public comment portion of the meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and Pam will read the statement that kind of explains public comment. I'll explain it a little bit more and then we'll jump into it. Matt, just so you know, we're gonna do the live folks first and then the recorded folks. Okay? Go ahead, Pam.
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoint of the public, we have scheduled time during the regular board meetings for comments from the public citizens. The board has set aside an unlimited time for public participation prior to the business portion of each meeting on the first and third Wednesday of the month. The time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Each individual will only be recognized once. The board does not respond to comments or questions. Thanks.
Thanks, and as I, oh, sorry. As I just said to Dr. Kuhn, we have been doing sort of a hybrid version of public comment during this and we're continuing that for now. So I will take the people that are here to speak first and then we will transfer over to the people that called in who were left their public comment on a recording. We do have quite a number of them. We have 10 in person and I think there's seven or eight, Matt?
Seven.
Seven, okay. So you can do the math if you need to leave. That's perfectly fine. Anytime, really, if this is the first time you're at a board meeting, welcome. We're glad to have you. If you ever need to get up and leave, you don't have to stay through. You're not committed to be here until we're done. So if you need to leave, that's fine. I'm gonna go ahead and call people up sort of two at a time. So one person will be up and the next person will be like on deck. There's a little microphone here at the podium. And Laura Lee will run the timer. The little lights do not work on the podium, so don't look at the lights. But you'll have three minutes. Laura Lee will give you a hand when you've got 30 seconds left. And I'd appreciate you wrapping it up at that point so you don't go over the 30 seconds because we've got about an hour's more work of public comment. Okay? Good. Everybody get to sign up that wanted to sign up. Great. All right. First up, we have Jennifer Geyer and then Marcia Malroni.
Okay, wherever you are. In May of this year, Shannon Clark, Director of Curriculum and Learning Design, invited me to participate in the English Language Arts Curriculum Revision. Working alongside Robin O'Donnell and Caitlin Newland, Shannon felt I'd be a good community lens. I'm honored and sobered with this responsibility and I take it very seriously. And I hope that I'll be a valuable team member and that I'll represent my community well. To that end, I've been attending many parent meetings in our district, asking questions and taking notes, and I've interviewed several high school students and teachers. So respecting the time limit, I summarize my findings as follows. Parents are craving transparency. Educations become shrouded in professionalized mystery and parents feel dismissed. These are their children and it seems the schools have forgotten that. Parents want to know what their children are learning. They are profoundly disturbed about subjects presented to especially young children with regard to human sexuality and critical race theory. Parents want unbiased, truth-based education. They want teachers to be educating and not training up activists. Students were fun. They want exposure to excellent material and challenging ideas. There's a high school honors English class, one student named, nicknamed "Men Behaving Badly." The only material they read the entire year were articles about people like Jeffrey Epstein and Harvey Weinstein. That's not honors English. Students want to discuss and debate ideas and all perspectives without being called out by their teachers for unconscious bias, patriarchy, capitalism, privilege, or conform to their teacher's bias in order to be graded fairly. They don't want to be divided into intersectionality groups and they do not want to be told what to think. They want to be taught how to think, reason, and debate. And then finally, teachers. Many teachers express that they're frightened that they'll be forced to make decisions of conscience. They know they can't go along with the teaching of hypersexualization in early elementary school and critical race theory and feel their time in the classroom is coming to an end. Elementary teachers are uncomfortable when they're told they can no longer say "girls" and "boys" or talk about Thanksgiving in a positive way. Teachers are disheartened when 45 out of 90 re-accrediting hours are required to be completed in cultural diversity studies where the environment is one that asserts you're a racist no matter what you do. And finally, teachers are concerned when they're told their new curriculum is not CRT, but it is. Deep equity is CRT. Honoring, celebrating dimensions of identities, intersectionality, disrupting implicit bias, moving from social dominance to social justice, dismantling disparities, et cetera. My calling is to work on curriculum. I'm very excited about that. These other issues are far too broad and too deeply entrenched for me to consider, but for the health of our school, I think they should not be ignored. May we move forward in transparency and collaboration, desiring truth and excellence in all things. And should the board see fit to grant me five minutes during a work session, I believe you would find the information that I felt was a bit more personal with names attached. Not edifying for the group, but I'd be happy to share.
Marcia Malroni.
I hadn't really planned on speaking tonight. I was just coming to listen, but I echo everything Jennifer says. I'm concerned about critical race theory and whatever you're calling it. I've been down to talk to people at the school district and I'm not getting satisfying answers. I feel like they've been obfuscating. I'm also concerned about our basis for American history. Are we using the 1619 Project or are we using 1776? I don't have children in the school district. I am a retired teacher from Southern California. I had five to seven languages spoken in my classroom. I had very few English-only students. I taught fifth grade, which is American history. But I, to teach the Constitution, I had to teach it after school on my own time and I got in enough trouble for that. I believe that, I felt like what I did as a job was I sold education. I didn't care who you were. I just wanted you to believe that you could get an education and you would succeed in this country. I'm concerned about critical race theory and the 1619 Project. Thank you.
Thank you. And I need to remind you to state, we do have it here, but I need to remind you to state for the record your name and your address when you come up. And next is Charles Oster and Brett Bush, in that order. And reminder, name and address. And if you folks could refrain from applauding, we could move through this quicker. I won't stop you, but I'm just asking. Thanks.
Good evening. Charles Oster, 1464 Scenic Valley Drive here in Loveland. We should be celebrating tonight. In our county of 366,000 residents, we're going on our eighth consecutive week without a death with COVID. Over the past one and a half years, our county has seen 250 deaths with COVID. That represents .00007% of our population. The average age of death with COVID is 82 years old. Pardon me. Is, yes, it's 82 years old. The life expectancy in our county is 81. There have been no pediatric deaths, frankly, not even close, thankfully. But we're not celebrating, instead of celebrating, we are beginning to read about draconian measures coming back in this endless masking masquerade once again. So I want to draw attention back to public comments of the experts. March 8th, 2020, Dr. Anthony Fauci told the country on 60 Minutes, "People should not be walking around with masks." Again, quote, "There's, people should not be walking around with masks. There's no reason to be walking around with masks," end quote. On June 5th, 2020, the World Health Organization said, quote, "At the present time, the widespread use of masks by healthy people in the community is not yet supported by quality or scientific evidence." A randomized study by the American College of Physicians stated in a published paper on June 24, 2020, they concluded, quote, "Randomized trials in community settings found no difference between surgical masks and risk of influenza-like illness." On February 25th of this year, Dr. Harvey Reich of Yale, Yale's University of School of Public Health summed it up with these words, and I quote, "I honestly do not know how anyone could say masks are a lifesaving measure when there's no evidence to suggest it. To say this is beyond the pale of anything that is scientific and knowable," end quote. And just a couple days ago, Dr. Michael Osterholm, the Director of the Center for Infectious Disease and Policy of the University of Minnesota, who was also named a member of President Biden's COVID-19 Advisory Panel on November 9th of last year, said, quote, "We know today that many of the face cloth coverings that people wear are not effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out." Last year, I remind you, he also said, quote, "In 1918, there were exhaustive studies done on masks and not one found that they made a difference. There is no scientific evidence to substantiate a claim that masks mitigate the transmission of upper respiratory viruses. We are acting hysterical once again. It is leaking into our schools. I am calling on this board to, to follow your mission statement, to empower your students to learn, to empower your educators to connect with their students. Stop this hysteria. You can do it. You have the power to do it. And community members, this will go on."
Thank you, sir. Your 30 seconds, or your 30, 3 minutes is up. Thank you, sir. Your 3 minutes is up. Okay, this is Brett Bush?
That's correct.
And then next I have Nicole Bush, I believe.
My address is 726 West Sixth Street, Loveland, Colorado. I was born in Loveland. I grew up in the Thompson School District. I went to CSU and got a bachelor's in finance and then proceeded to Washburn University School of Law and got my Juris Doctorate. I'm here as a parent tonight, a concerned parent with, you know, the same concerns that he had and that he put so well, in my opinion. I mean, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for the stance that you currently have on this. And I don't know what direction you guys are thinking that this is gonna go, but with where you're at currently, I'm very happy with it. And I think that it's consistent with the science. It's consistent with individual choice. It's consistent with medical privacy. These are all things that this country was founded on. We don't believe that the Thompson School District's role as an education administration should be interfering in our health choices with our children, especially in a situation where the risks are where they are. And that's all documented by the CDC and it's very clear that children are not negatively affected by COVID as a general rule and if, if they even have symptoms. What's unclear is what is the long-term damage they could be sustaining from breathing in their own spent breath all day, every day? There are studies out there right now that show that is really, really harmful. And I believe that administrations, school districts that are mandating this will eventually have liability for any of this because it is our position that this is a medical intervention. So again, thank you for the position that you've taken. We hope that you maintain it. In the event that you do not and you decide to implicate any mandate with regard to a mask or a vaccine, then I will initiate any legal action that is available to me to prevent that. I will start with a very detailed and comprehensive core request. I'll request all of your emails amongst one another with superintendent, principals, nurses, Lurmer County, the Colorado State. I want to find out what you're basing your information on and whether or not you guys have done your due diligence to make a decision that could have significant health impacts for every child in our school district. And so we just want to make sure that we continue on the pace that we're on, that we don't fall victim to the, the false narrative that's being fed to all of us and we look at the science and what's going on around us. And we maintain the position that you guys have already taken. So thank you again for your time and I look forward to hearing what your guys' position is as soon as possible.
Thank you. Nicole Bush and then Connie Stokoeak.
Hello, Nicole Bush, 726 West Sixth Street in Loveland. I have an information packet for you guys that has a cover letter. I'll try to read as much as I can, but I won't get through it. My name is Nicole Bush and I have two school-aged children that plan on attending Thompson Schools. First, I would like to thank you for your service over the past year and a half. I'm sure it wasn't easy. I would like to thank you all for the email that you sent out to all Thompson School District parents on July 8th. We cannot thank you enough for finally putting our children first with your decision to not require masks, social distancing, or vaccines in our schools. You know that medical interventions of any kind need to be decided by the individual families and their doctors, not politicians. After over 18 months of careful data collection, the verdict is in. Children are at very low risk of even developing mild symptoms from COVID and has statistically negligible chance of being hospitalized or dying from it. Not a single child under the age of 18 has died in our county. While every death is heartbreaking, these numbers show that school closures masking healthy kids and forcing children to social distance were never warranted to begin with. During the pandemic, children under the age of 14 were more likely to die from cancer, vehicle accidents, suicide, which every parent here knows is becoming an epidemic itself, homicide, cardiovascular disease, drowning, and the flu. They were more likely to die from any of that than from COVID. Despite all of the mounting scientific data and evidence that our children are not in danger from COVID and pose little threat to others, the CDC is trying to forcibly mask them, distance them, and jab them. Thank goodness we have a Board of Directors that actually cares about our children enough not to subject them to these insanely detrimental and abusive policies and take away the individual's innate right to choose what is done to their body. In this packet I hope you will let me give you, there is a study titled, "Is a Mask That Covers the Mouth and Nose Free From Desirable Side Effects in Everyday Use and Free From Potential Hazards?" Turns out they are not. The study references 44 experimental studies and 65 scientific publications on the harmful effects of masks during prolonged use. The study concludes that prolonged mask-wearing is likely to result in long-term disease-relevant consequences such as high blood pressure, arteriosclerosis, including coronary heart disease, as well as neurological diseases. The other physical and psychological effects found in mask-wearers in this study include hypoxemia, hyperkampnia, acidosis, immunosuppression, toxicity, increase in stress hormone levels, activation of fight-or-flight response, shortness of breath, increased muscle tension, chronic stress condition, compromised cognitive performance, that's good in school, fear, fatigue, headaches, mood disturbances, inflammation, insomnia, and dermatological problems. And these can lead to these health consequences. Increased predisposition for viral and infectious illnesses, anxiety, depression, hypertension, cardiovascular disease, cancer, diabetes, Alzheimer's disease, and exacerbation of conditions and diseases. With the mounting scientific evidence that masks are causing physiological and psychological harm to our children, you know the only rational and compassionate choice is to allow parents, students, and teachers to make their own decisions about masks and all other medical interventions.
Thank you, ma'am. Your 3 minutes is up. The buzzer doesn't work. But if you have a packet that you would like us to read, if you would give that to Laura Lee and then we can take it from there. Thank you. I appreciate it. Connie Stokoeak and then Christian Jorgensen. Is Connie here? Stokoeak? Christian, can you let, we have Connie first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She couldn't hear me, probably. Hi.
My name is Connie Stokoeak and I live in West Loveland. I would like to thank you for listening to me and my concerns over this past year that's been a complete farce. I pretty much, I was gonna say literally everything all of these people have already said. And I know I speak for tons and tons of people when I say I've pretty much chalked up this past year's my children's education to the trash can. It's been rough for everyone and I have watched my kids struggle and strife and cry. And my son went through depression. He said, "Mom, I feel hopeless. I just think what we're doing to our children is disgusting. If we would've put a mask on our kids two years ago, we would've had Child Protective Services call us for child abuse." I mean, this is just ridiculous. I have been in healthcare for 30 years, okay? The masks don't do anything. I am encouraging the board to do your due diligence and look things up. Do your research. First of all, mandates, not laws, okay? We don't have to follow those. The rights that are being stripped from us and our children, they have the right to an education, they have the right to their freedoms and their liberties, they're all being ripped and stolen from them, okay? I'm not gonna stand by idling anymore and poison my children. I'll have you know, masks, wearing a mask all day long to those poor babies increases their chances of throat cancer by 30%. They are breathing their own waste. Second of all, I just, I'm sorry, I have to compose myself. I'm just so upset right now. I don't even know, I don't even know what to say. I worry about the long-term damage to my children's health. We are raising a generation of kids that are gonna have mental health issues. They are living in fear. They are scared to death to socialize, scared to death of what's happening in the world. We need to teach them what's right. I don't know if any of you are aware that there has been a patent on the COVID virus and a patent on the vaccine for years. Go and look it up. It's on the government website. We're being lied to. We've been lied to for a year and a half. You people need to wake up, do your due diligence, look up what's actually happening in this world, and do what's right for our children. Please, I'm begging you. Thank you.
Christian Jorgensen and then Mike Riggs.
Christian Jorgensen, 3104 Bend Drive in Loveland. It's finally nice to meet all of you face to face and not just through an email. Do believe me when I say this, I have not envied one second that you guys have had to endure over this 18 months. I don't. Same goes for me. I really haven't enjoyed it either. What I am asking the board and you, Dr. Schaefer, is to not follow any guidance given to you by Tom Gonzalez. No longer muzzle our kids pre-through 12 as they've already had one year too long. First, what it started as, as it's already been stated here, first masks work, or excuse me, first masks don't work, then they work, now all of a sudden, two masks are better. Get the vaccine because masks are not working and now all of a sudden, the vaccine isn't working, so we're gonna have another mask. There is too much going on with the CDC and their lack of information or up-and-down information. Last year, at this exact time, you guys listened to Mr. Gonzalez's guidance, but he had no answers for any of the questions that you guys had when things could change or go back to non-masks, social distancing, all that other stuff. I've listened to almost every single one of his public calls that he's had. He doesn't make decisions. He is driven by the President of his board and the CD-PHE. I understand his position. I get it. I'm a private citizen. I don't have the degrees he does, but I do have common sense and I can look at these things. And if you sat and walked around those schools this year and watched every single kid wearing a mask, it was depressing. I'm asking you, stop listening to his guidance. It's guidance. Sometimes he's right, sometimes he's wrong, but it doesn't mean you always have to do it because he's the director. It's time to just stop with it. Let's also remember this so-called catastrophic Delta strain that is ravaging through the states was in India back in December. Now all of a sudden, it's magically here mid-July, right before schools start. Also, per the CDC in their own words, in order to tell what variant a positive test has, an entire process has to be done that's not being done on every single positive test. Scientists must perform a whole genome sequencing on that specimen. This process is only available for surveillance purposes only and not for individual purposes. Therefore, we shouldn't be following any guidance on this Delta because we're not testing it here. Our children deserve to see their teachers' full face, their lips, especially moving the younger ones. Enough is enough. Let's make the right choice. I've lived in Loveland my entire life. I went to this school district all the way through. And it's hard to swallow right now, but I'm asking you, do not follow the guidance that I know Mr. Gonzalez is about ready to hand down to you. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Mike Riggs, Mike Riggs and then Kelsey Day. Mike Riggs, going once. And then Kelsey Day.
Evening. Bottom of my heart, I say thank you. The only reason you're sitting in the seats you are right now is because you love and you care about kids. You're probably a grandfather, probably a father. We are in this together. We have to remember that. We're in this for the kids, our kids, your kids. And thank you for making the time to hold the positions that you hold. The data's there. It's been spoken already this evening and probably will be some more this evening. What I want to ask you about, or ask from you and for you is snapback. You've taken the opportunity to say, "We're open as normal or as close to normal as we can be in two weeks." But what happens when it changes? When the rules change? And I'm here to ask you, when they change, because they will. Don't give in. Remember why you're in the seat. Because you love kids. You have kids. You have grandkids. And if you change your stance because of more political or other scientific non-data, then we're back to where we started. Please, don't bend. Stand tall as one. I'm here because there's 15,000 kids that need you to do that. My two aren't even in this district. But I'm here because I'm a dad and I love my kids. And I want your kids and all these kids to be able to be just that. Kids, learning, loving, playing, experiencing life. It's easy to give in. I get it. It's tough to stand firm. 250 years ago, the people that formed this country, they stood firm. We need to also. Thank you.
Kelsey Day and then Blake Law.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Day. I live at 1226 Truxton Drive. My son will start in kindergarten in just a couple weeks. He's so excited. But I'm here tonight and I just want to thank you for your attention and your time. But I'm here to urge Thompson School District to do two things. One, reject critical race theory and its applied ideas in our classrooms. And two, continue to make masks optional for children this fall. I've somewhat obsessively been reading about critical race theory. I am also in education and I've read about 14 books, seven on either side of the debate, by the way. The core tenets of CRT, from what I can see, maintain that the constitutional and intellectual foundations of the United States are inherently racist and should be dismantled. Opposition to CRT is deep, passionate, and widespread, as you can see. The CRT movement postulates that unlike traditional civil rights, which embraces incrementalism and step-by-step progress, critical race theory questions the very foundations of the liberal order, including equality theory, legal reasoning, enlightenment rationalism, and neutral principles of constitutional law. The ideas that derive directly from CRT include affinity groups, white privilege, oppressed and oppressors, struggles for power narratives, anti-capitalist rhetoric, systemic racism, anti-racism, social justice, unconscious bias, equity, and the list goes on. The founders of CRT also state that while this movement started in the law, it has rapidly spread beyond the discipline and that contains an activist dimension. The idea is not just to analyze the fundamental structures, but to change them. I oppose CRT because I value the progress of the last century and it is obvious that CRT activists are intentionally tearing down the intellectual heritage and moral fabric upon which our country is based. CRT claims that, quote, "Racism is not a series of isolated acts, but it is an endemic in American life, deeply ingrained legally, culturally, and even psychologically, requiring, quote, 'a call for reinterpretation of civil rights laws.'" The truth is that our country is one of the least racist countries in the world and to say that those opposed to CRT are only trying to scare parents or engaging in a politically motivated conspiracy is dishonest. The civil rights movement has led to unprecedented racial progress and our country is not perfect, of course. However, it is a mecca for oppressed minorities worldwide precisely because it is a country where the American dream can be achieved. Americans want incremental change that is stable and effective. If the tenets of the CRT are widely consumed and internalized, its radical cynicism, resentment, nihilism, and negative perceptions of the world will destroy- nihilism, and negative perceptions of the world will destroy our country. We can all agree that there is value in teaching students, obviously, about the moral shortcomings of our country's history. Imperative, in fact, that we do that. But that should be thoughtfully distinguished from teaching kids that our country is irredeemably racist and therefore must be dismantled, starting with the founding documents. Thompson School District cannot bow to the ideological pressure as we may risk the freedoms that come with true liberal education and free thinking, open debate, and the right to disagree, and the right to stand up for whatever one believes. As Jason D. Hill states, "Americans are the first individualists and by design, the first non-tribal people in the world." On another note, I urge Thompson School District to stand up to the pressures of the crisis mode news cycles and look at science and evidence when it comes to mask mandates for kids. Masks were used to prevent transmission of coronavirus until a vaccine became available that would protect the most vulnerable from severe illness or death. Over 90% -- is it time?
It is. Just wrap up your sentence.
All right. They're not an at-risk age group. They need to see smiles, learn language. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Blake Law. Yeah, I think it's Blake Law. Blake?
Blake Law, 3900 West Eisenhower Boulevard in Loveland. And this meeting is being echoed across the nation. The theme of this meeting, the way the people feel, the way the parents feel about their children, this is not an isolated event. I've watched hour upon hour of this same meeting being reenacted over and over and over. I'm sure you're all already aware of that. One thing I want to address is the hopefuls to the seats on the school board, because the elections are coming up, several seats are available. I would like to propose that we meet together directly after this meeting to share email addresses to those people who are like-minded in an effort not to split the vote and run against each other. I think that's an important thing for us to do. Another thing I am willing to pledge is my support to the gentleman here if he's forced to take legal action against the board. I'd like to pledge financial support, whatever other kind of support I can get behind here. I'm very pleased with our current status of how we're looking at treating this upcoming school year, and I am terrified at the prospect of going backwards. And that's all I have to say.
That concludes the in-person comment. Matt, if you want to switch over to the recorded comment.
My name is Amanda Hillman, A-M-A-N-D-A-H-I-L-L-M-A-N. My address is 704 West Sixth Street in Loveland. My phone number is 303-815-5166. And my email is amanda.bhillman@gmail.com. My topic is supporting full in-person schools. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am grateful for the opportunity to have a voice in the direction of our community. I am a mother of three school-aged children in the Thompson School District, as well as a licensed professional counselor and registered art therapist, and have worked for 14 years in our community as a grief counselor and art therapist. Given my personal and professional life, I am very familiar with child development and the needs of children. I was so appreciative to hear that TSD is planning on a full return to in-person learning without masks and distancing, knowing the importance of seeing a person's face, whether that is your friend or your teacher, has on a child's development and their learning. Like many others, I fear another roller coaster ride of changing policies that create an environment of unpredictability, instability, and inconsistency for our children. This is a recipe for ongoing anxiety and depression, and status of all, increased suicidality for our community, and especially our youth. I implore you, members of the board, to commit to pre-COVID in-person standards for school with a choice for masks, no matter the case count. In the past, the board continually pointed to cases rising with absolutely no follow-up information or data about the outcome or origin of those cases. We know with certainty that COVID did not spread in our schools. In fact, school is one of the least likely sources of transmission, according to Lammer County's COVID tracker. There is no justification to mandate masks, distancing, or vaccines at this point for all of our children. The data clearly show that none of these mitigations have reduced COVID transmission, and as such, there can be no reasonable moral argument of social responsibility in this context. Responsibility and choice should reside within each family. I am happy to respect each family's personal choices and expect mine to be respected in return. As we all know, a family not comfortable with full in-person learning now has numerous options for online settings. Again, for all the reasons listed above, I am grateful TSD plans to return to in-person. We need the structure, stability, and predictability in knowing what to expect from our schools, no matter what. We owe this to our children. They have already sacrificed too much. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Hello, my name is Corinne Rozich. That's spelled C-O-R-I-N-N-E. Last name is Rozich, R-O-Z-I-C-H. I live in Loveland at 719 Nisa Drive. I am having a discussion with a woman on a website here about you guys bringing back masks, and I feel it should be optional. If masks are mandated for the Thompson School District, I will be pulling my students out of the district, as well as many of my other friends. So I really hope you guys consider the option to mask or not mask. I think it should be able to let be left to the parents for that option. I truly appreciate you guys listening, and I hope it goes in our favor. Thank you so much.
My name is Glenn Pease. My address is 1501 Village Avenue, Loveland, Colorado, and my phone number is 970-373-6999. I'm calling to share my concern with the current approach to masks for TSD students. Our son attended TCO last year and has been so excited to get back to school in person. However, I'm very concerned with the current stance on masks. I urge you to do what's best for the health and safety of our students by continuing to require that all kids wear masks. The CDC is currently recommending that all unvaccinated people wear masks, which includes all elementary-age kids. And the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that all kids wear masks regardless of their vaccination status. So the current TSD policy indicating that masks are not required is not in alignment with the current guidance and puts our kids at risk during a time where COVID is once again surging with a much more transmissible Delta variant. We were very impressed with TSD's approach to ensuring the health and safety of all of our kids last year and providing all the options that you did. We're hoping that the district adjusts its stance to require masks for all kids. We feel strongly that masks should be required for all elementary and middle school students until a vaccine for those populations is widely available. TSD's current stance is skipping ahead by a couple of months, which feels risky. And as with anything with kids, it's easier to start out more strict and then ease on requirements rather than vice versa. We feel that the current district thinking on masks could work well once vaccines are widely available for the five to 11 age group, which looks possible for late fall. But until then, it seems so important for masks to be required, especially for elementary-age kids. Thank you so much for all you do each and every day for our children, and thank you for reviewing the current mask policy.
My name is Jonathan Hillman. I live at 7041 Sixth Street, Loveland. My phone number is 2252765583. And my email is jghillman@gmail.com. My topic is the return to in-person learning. I thought it might be helpful to provide some factual context for the decisions we face around COVID measures in our school. In the community TSD, there have been 101 deaths involving COVID. 50% of these were above age 85, 80% above 75, 99% above age 52. The average age of a teacher in Colorado is 41. The COVID case fatality rate, or CFR for average age teachers, is roughly 0.02% and less than 0.001% for students. The CFR for those aged 65 and up is more than 90 times higher than those aged 18 to 49, and more than 4,000 times higher than those aged 17 and under. Data from the CDC include indicating the hospitalization rate of COVID cases for average age teachers is 2%, and for students is 0.7%. This is comparable to influenza for these age groups. The total rate of hospitalized COVID cases in Lammer County is 5%. This is the same as the national average provided by the CDC. TSD data shows 317, or 2% of students have tested positive for COVID, and 193, or 9% of staff. This represents case rates consistent with those across the US for these COVIDs, regardless of the nature or timing of any COVID measure. At the time Lammer County stopped tracking the data, there were 18 COVID cases traced to transmission in schools. This is less than one school-linked case per six schools. Finally, the CDC has made clear that COVID vaccination does nothing to mitigate transmission, and as such, any vaccine mandate at any age should be off the table for discussion entirely. While well-intentioned, there is no data to suggest that the mandates imposed on our children and teachers over the past year improved the trajectory of COVID in our community. It is undeniable that the impact of COVID measures on the physical and mental health, well-being, and education of our children cannot be justified in terms of their benefit to our children. Even entertaining further measures in our schools, like those imposed in the past year, must be understood as willingly sacrificing our children for some perceived benefit to everyone else for which there is no evidence. What kind of society does this? The time has come to commit without precondition, without any weight and see hedging, to 100% in-person, unmodified, pre-COVID school.
Good morning. I'd like to leave a message for the board. I'm asking that you please use extra COVID relief funds to put cameras in all schools so we could see the weekend I'm here of what's being taught. Thank you very much. Ken Merson, A-E-N, capital M-O-T-R-S-D-N. My address is 1990 Ice Street, Unit 240, Loveland, Colorado, 80538. My phone number is 970-227-1630. My email is my name in small letters, K-E-N-M-O-E-R-S-D-N at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Hello, this is Lisa Winborn, L-I-S-A-W-I-N-B-O-U-R-N. My phone number is 970-533-2085. Address 250 Green Teal Drive, Loveland. And I would like to voice my support for doing mask-free schooling and in-person schooling for the 2021-2022 school year. My kids struggled very much wearing a mask all day. It was very difficult for them. It was itchy, it was distracting, it lowered their oxygen levels, they struggled, and they also struggled with virtual learning. It was very difficult. The resolution was poor on screen. They couldn't connect it. They got Zoom gloom. They had all kinds of troubles and issues with virtual learning. So I would really like to see Thompson School District do mask-free and in-person learning the entire school year, because I think it promotes a sense of positivity and connection, which is very important for their immune system, keeps their immune system high, and helps to resist getting sick. Also, kids have very few H2 receptors, which is what the spike protein binds do, so they're actually very low risk for getting COVID. And there's a lot of studies that show that masks actually hinder their learning because it lowers their oxygen levels, lowers their immune system. So thank you for listening to my concern, and I look forward to this year. Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Stephanie Darcy. Address 5141 Single Tree Drive, Loveland. Phone number 303-880-5535. Topic of conversation is mask-wearing. I just beg you to really think about what has this been doing to the kids. My kids don't want to wear masks. My friend's kids don't want to wear masks. I think it's silly masks are doing nothing. And it's really been sad to see these kids suffering wearing masks all day long at school. That's all I have to say. Just please, please consider the kids and not in science without their -- please, just, I beg you, not to mask our kids. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Matt. That brings an end to public comment. I just would like to say that I know probably all of you or most of you are here with regard to the issue of return to learn and COVID protocols in the schools. There is an agenda item down here, 6.4. It's our last discussion item. It is only a discussion item tonight. We won't be taking a vote. We won't be making any changes to any policy regarding those items tonight. So you're welcome to stay if you want. You're welcome to not stay if you don't want to. But I just wanted to make it clear that there is not a vote on the agenda on will we wear masks, won't we wear masks? Excuse me. I would like you to sit down, please. I'm speaking. I am speaking, and I would like you to let me speak. I would like to speak. Thank you. This is our meeting. You're welcome to stay and listen. You had your time to talk. If I answered some of you folks' emails earlier today, and those of you who are parents in the district got letters earlier this month that stated, and I'm sure you've read in the paper, that stated, "We intend to start classes fully in-person, mask-free." Okay? I just said that right now. I am saying that right now. I cannot predict the future. I am not going to go on record, and I don't think anybody's going to go on record saying what's going to happen next week, next month, next year. I can't do that. We can't do that. I'm sorry.
We'd like to know what your procedure is for voting on this.
This is the procedure. You're watching it. Okay, I'm -- this is not appropriate. This isn't back and forth, okay? You had your time to speak, sir, and you made your threats to sue us if we don't do what you want us to do. And now it's our time to have our meeting. You're welcome to write us. You're welcome to call us, and you're welcome to speak in the public portion of the meeting at our next meeting.
Well, what's the point of speaking if you guys don't respond to anything that we said? We all want to know. All of us were here.
This isn't a time for discussion. It was clearly stated at the beginning of public comment. It was... Correct. We have a meeting to conduct. This is not the time when we are going to -- This is not the time when we are going to --
It would be the time. You can simply inform us of when the vote will --
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting if you please don't be quiet. This is our meeting to conduct business. We listened to you all speak. You all had your chance equally to speak. You can call in next time. You may be used to other meetings where the board and the public interact. That's not how we operate.
There's virtual meetings where we have zero ability to interact.
Sir, I welcome -- I would welcome -- I would welcome you to run for my seat. I'm up in November. You are welcome. You're welcome to run for it. But right now, I'm not going to have this conversation with any of you. I am going to have to add -- I am going to have to ask our security folks to ask you to leave if you can't sit here and watch the meeting quietly. I really don't want to do that because that's not how I run meetings. If you know me, you've seen me do this for six years, and this is not what I do.
Will you at least say when you're going to meet with Mr. Gonzalez for his guidance?
I'm not meeting with, I've never met with Mr. Gonzalez.
You know what I mean? Just wondering, you guys have...
And I'm not answering your questions right now, Mr. Jorgensen. I am going back to our agenda, and the next person that speaks out of turn, I will ask to leave. I'm sorry. So the next item up is item six point one, school-based health clinic update. Todd, is that yours?